It's in the folder.
It's in, um, which one? Hold on, let me see here.
Where do you need me to send it to?
Eric, did we get resolution on those last two days? We did not. I see we voted three times and then we resign ourselves to it being nobody.
Savannah.
Yes.
What was the take on all your, the tour of all the substations? Tour of the substations?
I don't know.
It's pretty much the same, like. I'll do it actually. I'll do it really too far away from the current topic.
Still waiting on it in my back room.
Did you put on the little field trip?
I did.
Did you get your hair cut again?
No.
Exceptionally flat.
If you want to be here.
I like your hair. It looks nice. Um, if you could put your thing down, I'd appreciate it. Thank you. And Liz, you're both ready? You guys good? Ready, Donna? All set?
Yeah.
Good evening. I call this February fourteenth meeting of the Morrisville Town Council to order. Thank you to those watching via livestream and those who are watching a recording of this meeting. On February seventeenth, the video of this meeting will be uploaded to www.townofmorrisville.org slash government forward slash live dash video. This evening, Senior Officer Carl, Carl Rodriguez has served as a police officer for twenty-four years, serving fifteen years with the town of Morrisville. He was assigned to the K nine unit with his partner K nine Arco. He is also a veteran of the U.S. Army and served for seven years as a paratrooper with the eighty-second Airborne Division. Thank you so much for being here with us this evening. Tonight's indication will be delivered by Councilmember Rabadi.
Thank you, ma'am. In honor of Black History Month, I'd like to read part of the poem Earthrise by Amanda Gorman, the first National Youth Poet Laureate, um, who was named poet laureate in twenty seventeen. This poem is dedicated to Al Gore and the Climate Reality Project. On Christmas Eve nineteen sixty-eight, astronaut Bill Anders snapped a photo of the earth as Apollo eight orbited the moon. Those three guys were surprised to see from their eyes our planet looked like an earthrise, a blue orb hovering over the moon's gray horizon with deep oceans and silver skies. It was our world's first glance at itself, our first chance to see a shared reality, a declared stance and a commonality, a glimpse into our planet's mirror. And as threats drew nearer, our own urgency became clearer as we realized we hold nothing dearer than this floating body we call home.
You. All who are able, please stand and join us in reciting the Fledge of Allegiance. I.
Fledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Before we adopt tonight's agenda, Town Council policy is to review and ensure there are no conflicts of interest or appearance of conflict of interest with any items on the agenda. Anyone? Nope. Then I would, uh, would anyone like to make a motion to approve tonight's agenda?
I make a motion that we approve.
Second.
A motion a second. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Hearing none. That carries unanimously six zero. I would also note that Councilmember Skargans Johnson will not be joining us tonight. So that's why we have six. At this time, we are at, uh, item six, public address. Town Clerk Smith will now present any public comments received and invite anyone in the audience who signed up to join us.
If I could clarify, I know Ms. Cornelius is here to speak at the public hearing.
Public hearing, yeah.
Thank you so much.
You want to speak here in the public hearing?
Yeah.
On the resounding?
So about, did you want to hold and wait for the substation rezoning?
Yeah.
Okay. Thank you.
Hey, good evening, Mayor Colley, members of the Town Council. My name is Burt Battin. I'm principal of Morrisville Elementary, newly appointed for the Wake County School System, just started last week. Excited to come in and give greetings from Morrisville and also extend an arm and an invitation to partner with the Town Council for future opportunities to build community and to support students academically and with their character and growth. I look forward to my time at Morrisville. It's a school with a great history and tradition and a history and tradition that builds on community roots. And so I'm proud to carry on and to lead forward and look forward to working with each of you as I can in the future weeks and months. Thank you for letting me come and introduce myself. Hope to see you at Morrisville Elementary in the upcoming months.
Great. Thank you very much, sir. Appreciate you being here. Were there anything else, Town Clerk Smith? Is there anyone else in the audience who'd like to do public address at this time? Who didn't have a chance to sign up? Okay, great. At this time, we're at item seven, public hearings. There is one continued public hearing on this evening's agenda. A proposed amendment of the zoning map for Duke Energy located at nine four zero Morrisville Carpenter Road. That's R E Z twenty-two dash zero zero one zero. The public hearing was opened on the January tenth Town Council meeting. Suzy Russell, Planner Two, will facilitate. Ms. Russell.
Thank you, Ms., thank you, Mayor Colley, and good evening, members of Town Council. So on January thirtieth, the applicant did request a continuance of this meeting and they would like it continued to the twenty-eighth, the meeting of February twenty-eighth. They also provided a document. Let me see. Do you have the agenda? The, just the full agenda. Is this it right here? I mean, the, well, I guess I can just go like that. Thank you. Perfect. Oh. I'm sorry, what? Okay. Thank you so much. Okay, so, um, they also provided this document. It contains responses to the questions that were raised on the tenth of January, when that, this whole matter came before you for the first time. This document is placed in the attachment portion and it is attachment fifteen. They are the frequently asked questions. And this is basically for your review and for the public's review, um, for the twenty-eighth meeting. And then at that time, you could bring any questions or concerns concerning any of these, um, answers to their, to their attention. Also, uh, attachment eleven was added. I'm not quite sure how to get back to where Eric was, but attachment eleven was added and it basically depicts, um, the address list that Duke used to provide correspondence to all the residents in that area. Attachment twelve is a map that I created and that shows you the elements of the site. So stormwater, gravel, substation, et cetera. And then attachment thirteen is showing you the easement in relation to that property line on the eastern border so that you can clearly see where that lies. Attachment fourteen is the request to continue from Duke to the meeting on the twenty-eighth. And then this is attachment fifteen. Uh, this other thing that I wanted to bring to your attention is Duke is assessing the plan to the south, which you guys had requested, and they are preparing that for the twenty-eighth meeting. And then on my end, I did reach out to Ben Mills, who is in the engineering department concerning the stormwater, uh, questions that had come up from you all. And he will be at the meeting on the twenty-eighth to answer any questions you might have concerning the stormwater. And, um, those are my updates thus far. You guys have any further clarification questions for me?
If anyone has any additional questions that haven't been put forth or clarifications necessary now?
Thank you.
Hearing none. Thank you very much. Would there, uh, I guess we'll continue hearing from the residents at this point. So Town Clerk Smith can do the people in person first and then whoever else might have emailed us.
You want to do the in-person first? Yes, sir.
Please.
The first individual signed up for a public, um, hearing address is Lakshman, well, I apologize, uh, Rose Cornelius.
Eric, she should get five minutes because she's representing the chamber.
Feel like you'll need more than the three minutes, Ms. Cornelius?
No.
Thank you very much for being here. Um, your name and role for the record, please?
My name is Rose Cornelius. I'm the President of the Morrisville Chamber of Commerce.
Okay.
This is to the Town Council, Honorable Mayor. The town of Morrisville has grown exponentially over the past two decades and we expect this growth to only continue over the next two decades. With growth comes the need for additional infrastructure to support the businesses and residents of our community. Among businesses planned for Morrisville is a one hundred and nine acre Advanced Life Sciences Campus. This project will generate hundreds of high-paying jobs and help to further establish Morrisville as a strategic hub of the life science industry, further spurring more investment in our community. Our town also intends to build a high school. These are just two examples of the many large-scale projects scheduled to be built in Morrisville. For these and future projects to be successful, our town needs a reliable source of electric energy. Currently, Duke Energy Substation functions well over its intended level of coverage and we know our town will need additional electrical support to support future growth. The Morrisville Chamber of Commerce is supportive of Duke Energy's desire to expand its substation capacity in order to meet the current and future energy needs in Morrisville. And we are hopeful that representatives from both Duke Energy and the town of Morrisville will come together and agree upon the best way for that expansion to occur. There are many great things on the horizon for Morrisville and the Chamber looks forward to working with our partners to ensure we continue being one of the best communities to work and to live. And this is so signed Veronica Bent, our Board Chair, and myself. Thank you.
Thank you.
The next individual is Lakshman Singh.
Respected Mayor and respected council members, thanks for giving me an opportunity to talk here. So I am here on behalf of, as a member of the Addison Park Community. Our community is having, is having a lot of concerns with the rezoning plan. And we are mainly concerned with the radiations and look and feel changes that's going to happen due to this rezoning. And our idea is not to, uh, shell the plan, but to see that the residents are happy with the plan and our HOA is following up with a lot of concerns with the radiations and look and feel and having exterior wirings or, uh, I mean, on top of near the communities and all. We don't want like a lot of wiring and change, totally change the look and feel of the area. Currently, the community has a lot of greenery and we want to see in that way. And we, I want to see that mainly what are Duke Energy proposes doesn't change the look and feel, but, uh, it increases the capacity without changing the look and feel. And also my committee members have provided a lot of concerns earlier and, uh, we are getting a lot of updates from the Town Council via mail, but I don't see any positive things happening in those letters or communications. So I just want to see, uh, what are the, how the concerns are being heard and then, uh, taken care of. And I would request the council members to, uh, take a look at our concerns and make sure that our committee members are happy about it. And I haven't seen the FAQ that was provided in this meeting. I'll go through it and then I'll see if those concerns are allied or addressed in those FAQs. So, um, we'll follow up with the next meeting and then I'll go through all these questions along with our committee members and we'll come back if we have any additional concerns. Yeah, thank you.
Mr. Singh, if you could provide your, uh, home address for the record as well, that'd be appreciated.
Yeah, sure. I have provided in the document, yeah.
We usually have it in the audio too.
Oh, okay. My address is one sixteen Belles Ridge Court, Morrisville.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Was that it for the in-person?
That was all the individual comments. We just have two, um, email public comments.
Okay, let me just, uh, was there anyone else in the audience who wanted to deliver an in-person public comment that didn't sign up? Okay, thank you, sir. Go ahead.
The first, the first comment received via email is from Narinder Carr, one one six Hatchet Creek Court, Morrisville. Dear Town Council members, I'm writing to you as a concerned citizen of Morrisville regarding the expansion of the substation locate, located at nine four zero Morrisville Carpenter Road. I completely understand this is a necessary expansion for the town of Morrisville due to its growth, but I also understand that there can be a solution which can be accepted by the citizens being impacted and by Duke Energy. My children and I have lived at one one six Hatcher Creek Court for sixteen years and would like to call this our home for many more years to come. However, we are concerned about our safety. A healthy and safe life is precious for us all. I hope you all feel the same way about your family's health and will never put in danger if you can help it. The families living close to this expanded substation will have continuous exposure to the electric and magnetic fills emitted. Granted, there may not be sufficient scientific evidence of the health risk for individuals living in close proximity of the substations, but as we all know, scientific studies take a lot of money and time. Therefore, we will never know what the true impact is from EMFs on individuals living close to substations. However, we all know the dangers of EMFs in general and can say with a hundred percent guarantee that no one would want exposure to it. The CDC.gov site provides evidence for health risks from general exposures to EMF. There have also been recent concerns about substations being targeted. I'm sure none of you want to bring this kind of attention to your neighborhoods with families. Please consider rejecting the expansion to the north as this will impact the neighborhoods. Please insist on finding other solutions that do not impact the health and safety of your residents. We understand there are challenges in finding an alternative, but please reconsider. There's always an alternative. Thank you for your time and warm regards. The second comment is from Michael Haley, Executive Director, Wake County Economic Development. Dear Mayor Colley and members of Town Council, I'm, I am writing on behalf of the Wake County Economic Development to express my support of the town of Morrisville's future economic growth. Wake County is part of one of the fastest-growing regions in the nation. More than sixty people move to Wake County every day to take advantage of our high quality of life. As our population expands, more companies are expressing interest in calling Wake County home. Due to our convergence in a world-class educational ecosystem, a highly skilled population and additional investments in product, building and sites, Wake County is on everyone's radar. It's our job at Wake County Economic Development to support each of Wake County's municipalities and the Research Triangle Park in making smart decisions related to the new company locations and expansions. Morrisville has been, Morrisville has been an integral part of our economic success in Wake County, already home to corporate giants like Fuji Film, Biotechnologies, Lenovo, Snyder, Credit Suisse, Microsoft, and small but cutting-edge companies like, like Molk Immune and Locus Biosciences. Morrisville has punched above its weight class for years. Recent life science developments, developments in the town offer the chance for that trend to continue. Since twenty twenty, Wake Since 2020, Wake County has added nearly $5 billion in planned capital investment and a little less than 6,000 new jobs in the life science sector alone. Morrisville's ability to grow its local economy by capitalizing on the momentum of this sector is unprecedented. With real estate coming online, developments like the Spark Discovery at Perimeter Park and Pathway Triangle, and Wake Tech's Life Science Campus in the town's backyard, Morrisville can create an opportunity for an expanded tax base and careers in a sector that values workforce training, diversity, equity, inclusion, and sustainability. WCED has enjoyed a tremendous working relationship with the town and the Chamber of Commerce over the years, and we are extremely supportive of the town's ability to increase and diversify their tax base while growing employment opportunities for Morrisville citizens. As such, we fully support the short and long-term needs for the viability of the town, including infrastructure expansion. Our team is proud to be a partner with the town, and please reach out to me if I can answer any questions. Sincerely, Michael Haley.
So does council have any share at this time or any questions of staff? We also have the applicant Marty Clayton in the audience if necessary. Seeing none, if it's the will of the council, I'll just announce that we're going to leave this public hearing open, and we expect to be addressing this issue again on the 28th of this month. Some head nods, so I think that's acceptable to everybody. As always, we appreciate the input from all the residents and the businesses in the area. We appreciate Mr. Clayton also attending tonight, and we look forward to him and his team being here in a couple of weeks. Thank you again, Ms. Russell. Appreciate it. Okay. At this time, we are at item eight, action items. There is one action item on this evening's agenda, a resolution appointing advisory committee members. This is our winter appointment. Eric Smith, Town Clerk, will facilitate this item. Mr. Smith?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Give me just a second to pull this back up. Okay, recruitment for our advisory committees began on January 4th through February the 1st. We did have a successful appointment cycle. Council was able to appoint all the remaining vacancies with the exception of one position on the Smart City Steering Committee. Council can decide to attempt to do a third ballot to appoint that seat tonight, or we can leave that vacancy open until next recruitment cycle, which will be the summer at the end of April.
Would the council be interested in just having that one ballot for our next meeting? And we could just do that rather than trying to do it tonight?
Vic is not there, so her vote won't be counted.
So if we could wait till the next meeting?
Yeah. Next meeting or if it's too much, you know, next cycle.
So when is the, when is the next cycle? That's a good question.
It'll be at the end of April, beginning of May for the winter.
They're having some quorum issues, so it might be nice to get someone in there at our next meeting if possible.
The Smart City Steering Committee is having quorum issues?
Smart City does not have quorum issues. Smart City is, is good to go. They may have had a couple of recent incidences, but not.
I thought October and November, they couldn't meet because of quorum.
Well, that, maybe I should say, in comparison to some of the committees that actually had more ongoing quorum issues, Smart Cities wasn't as pronounced as some of the other issues.
Well, opening up to discussion, I'd be in favor of asking Eric to present us ballots in advance of our last meeting, next meeting, like we did for this time, to see if we can fill that one vacancy. Or if it's the will of the council, we can wait till the April recruitment cycle.
Let me ask a question. If we fill, if we fill the vote next, next meeting, then next cycle, how many openings on the Smart City Committee?
I would have to, I would have to pull it up. There shouldn't be any, because we set them to expire on off cycles, but I would have to, to give you a firm answer, I need to go look those numbers up.
I'm in favor of voting on the next meeting then.
May I ask a clarifying question? Do we have eligible candidates?
We do have eligible candidates.
Okay, thank you.
They were, they were just, council was kind of split on making that decision.
Yep, and we didn't have everyone voting.
That's correct. It was literally a 50-50 split on the.
So when we have seven, we'd probably be choosing someone. Yeah, so that sounds like we, that's the direction. Go ahead and give us that one ballot in advance of our next meeting, and hopefully we can just appoint that last one. Is that okay with everybody? Okay, that's great. At that point, I'd entertain a motion on this item right now then, to appoint these members.
Tucker?
Have a motion in a second. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, that carries unanimously 6-0. Thank you, Mr. Smith. I know it's always an effort.
I'll bring you a.
Exactly. That sounds great. And I'd like to just share something about our committee appointments. We really appreciate all the engagement, and a lot of people are applying now, and we want them to be engaged. And remember, all our meetings are open to the public. You don't have to be on a committee to actually attend a committee meeting, hear what they're saying, and actually contribute like we do at public address here. Many of our meetings, other than planning and zoning, allow a little bit more back and forth, which is a good, really good discussion dynamic. So I'd encourage everyone, even if they weren't appointed this cycle, to please be engaged and attend those meetings. Would anyone else like to share their thoughts about committee appointments? Okay, great. We'll move on to the next item then. Thank you again, Town Clerk Smith. We are scheduled to take a break, but I think we're doing okay. Everyone just going to keep going?
Keep going.
Okay. We have one presentation this evening, a Town Council, a Town Code of Ordinances update. Brandon Zudema, our Deputy Town Manager, will make the presentation. He will be doing that remotely via Teams.
Brandon, if you'd just let me go first, is Giselle and I are going to help facilitate, if you have questions, if you would hold your thing up so that we can let Brandon know, because he's going to be looking at his presentation and not recognizing council members. And he will stop periodically and let us know when he's ready to entertain questions. Is that okay, Brandon?
Yes, that'd be good.
Thank you.
All right. Paul, is that Mr. Mayor?
Yes, sir. Please proceed. Thank you.
All right, well, good evening to you and members of council again. Thank you for your flexibility tonight. Want to spend a little time tonight with a Town Code of Ordinances update. So what we have done is, as you are aware, we have a total of 18 chapters, or will have potentially after you go through this review, a total of 18 chapters that make up our Town Code of Ordinances, 17 as of today. And those ordinances prescribe how things are anticipated or expected or desired to work in the town. They are a companion to some other documents like the UDO, and then, of course, they also work closely with the North Carolina General Statutes in terms of determining behaviors within the town of Morrisville. So one of the things that's important for us to do, not only from an operational standpoint, but also from a transparency standpoint, is to ensure that those code of ordinances are updated and are accurate and reflect not only the desires of the town and the council, but also the community, and of course, that they are accurate when used for enforcement purposes within our community as well. So the last, bear with me just one second here. Eric, I've taken control but can't advance anything.
Brandon, if you click that down arrow here at the top where my icon is, it should allow you to just go up and down. There you go.
Okay, sorry, it's a delay. I apologize. Sorry about that, Mr. Mayor. So what we did was several months ago, we recognized that we were due for. Normally, what we do on a year-to-year or sometimes even a month-to-month basis is you will see isolated issues that will come up and will come before you with a request to update one chapter or even one section of a code of ordinances. One you've seen more recently has been some of the stormwater updates, and so we deal with those on more of a topical basis. This is more of a get into the weeds and review the entire document to make sure that it's accurate and that it's enforceable, and particularly that it's transparent for our community. So what staff has done, and when I say staff, there are too many people to list, but a number of our department heads, many of our other subject matter experts, certainly the town attorney's office and others on the admin team have all supported this process. So we have gone through and looked at every aspect of the code of ordinances from spelling and edits to references to North Carolina General Statute, references to other chapters, and also, more importantly, our practices and what our policies are intended to be versus what's written in the code. So with that, again, we have looked at ensuring that everything is accurate and reflects what we do. We've also identified some missing content. As we go through and we come up on issues, we occasionally recognize that things change in the town and that we may not address things that we want to in our ordinances. So we've also made some additions that you'll see as we go through this, and then occasionally there's just content that's outdated and no longer relevant to the way that, you know, essentially the world works. And you'll see one or two examples of that as well. So as I mentioned, we've looked at all of the references to North Carolina General Statute. These have all also been reviewed by the town attorney's office. In some cases, we found there were statutes referenced that were repealed, and we just needed to review the references. In other cases, most notably with North Carolina General Statute 160A being transferred to 160D, a good portion of those sections went over, so that all needed to be updated. And then there were just a couple of references that were no longer accurate based on the way the statutes read today. Also made again, that all references to the UDO and to other chapters in the document were accurate, and we made a few edits here and there just for minor misspellings or unintentional edits that needed to be done. One of the bigger aspects of this was to ensure that as we as a town, as we as a local government, and ideally we as a community begin to focus more on DEI, that we ensure that the language that we use is inclusive. And that certainly needs to go for our official documentation and for our ordinances and other guidelines. So staff has gone through and identified any references to he or his or her and removed them with they or their. Same thing, any references to citizens have been removed and replaced with residents and visitors. We still had a couple of references to inhabitants. We have also made those updates, and then we had some language such as vagrants that has been updated to a more appropriate language for 2023. We've also gone through and made sure that the formatting is consistent, so a little thing, but you always start with a number and then a letter and then another number and that sort of thing, so it's consistent, you know what you're looking for in the document. And then as part of this review, we did look at other municipal partners in the area to see how they did things and to what theirs are structured like, and it wouldn't surprise you that most of the ordinances throughout the county start with a very similar base structure and have just expanded a little bit differently over time. But we took a look at that as well, in case our staff didn't see anything, but we knew what other municipalities might be doing that we wanted to address in our ordinances as well. Again, Frank and his office have been helpful in reviewing a lot of these with us. And then what we've also done, we knew this was coming, so we've identified several specific areas that we knew we needed to do some research and do some updates, and I'm going to circle back to each of these. But we did take a look at alcohol in parks, group demonstrations and picket lines, our park use by organized groups as that continues to grow, ride shares, and then smoking and tobacco. We've had some conversations about that previously. Want to quickly reference, in case you have any questions, there are two areas that we will not address that we will come back to you likely later this year to give you some additional updates. One is in Chapter 10. It talks about some fire limits being established. I won't waste your time now with the details on that, but we'll bring that back to you. Nothing that needs to be addressed right now, no issues there that can't wait. And then the second is in Chapter 58. That section has a lot of specific references to speed limits on certain streets and no parking and other things on certain streets, and our Public Works Department is currently doing an inventory that's going to help us more accurately update that chapter, and so we'll be bringing that back to you again sometime later this year. So what you've got in your packet, and understanding there's a lot, a lot of information here, is there is a spreadsheet that shows all the material changes that have been made to any of the ordinances. And so when I say material, anything that's content-based, anything that might change a policy or a procedure or is noteworthy, that excludes anything like the minor edits, the updates to the, something that was typed wrong or spelled wrong or just needed to be clarified. And then, of course, you've got the larger packet, which has the ordinance document on the front, and then the full set of ordinances showing every single one of the changes that are being recommended to be made over the course of, I think, about 203 pages all told. And again, just as a note, don't worry too much about how things split and spread out. Once we take out all that red, we'll, we'll get that all cleaned up. So I want to stop there and ask if there are any questions about what we're doing, why we're doing it, or how we got to where we are with these recommendations.
If there's any questions, just lift up your thing so Martha can see.
Mayor Pretend Johnson?
Brandon, you may have said this, and I missed it, and I apologize. When was the last time we updated this, this ordinance, and do we do it on some kind of regular schedule?
So the last full update was in 2017, and so it's been going on six years now. One of the things we'll talk about towards the end is, is doing this on a more regular basis so that we keep up with it, and it won't be this scope of a challenge again in the future to try to cover that much time. We did find a few things probably that have been around longer than 2017, but I can also guarantee you that with 203 pages, you'll find something the next time we do this that we missed this time as well. But this time, it has been six years, and we're looking to do it more annually to avoid this scope of change again.
Thank you.
Brandon, you can continue.
Okay, thank you. So I do want to go through and give you some highlights of the material changes, and again, want to share with you the way that this presentation and the next couple are structured is that we'll go through this tonight, happy to answer any questions you may have, and walk you through this. There's a lot of material here, so we'll come back in two weeks with a brief, be happy to take any questions you may have either tonight or as you look at it between meetings. You can certainly email me or call me with those questions, and then we'll bring it up again on the 28th and answer any questions you may have then, with the goal being that we would come back then on March 14th for adoption of these changes, but certainly don't expect to get everything addressed tonight or necessarily in between. But we'll give you some opportunity for questions and feedback as we go. So with these material changes, I'm going to hit some highlights as we go through and give you some general overview. Again, what we looked at were, the material changes that we'll highlight here are some of the changes that could impact our residents. They might look at something different. Again, not including some of the non-material that are highlighted, which would be General Statute, some of the formatting edits, and again, particularly that inclusive terminology is highlighted here so that you can see how that has changed as well. And what you'll see here is generally a shorter version of what's in the spreadsheet that you've been provided in your packet. So the way this is structured is it shows you the chapter and then the title of that chapter, and then what the changes that were made. So as an example, it talks about changing the definition of gender in here to a more inclusive definition, and some of the other changes that you can see. For example, adding this chapter, we added a nondiscrimination ordinance chapter. We'll talk about that. That's included in now, since you adopted that last year to take on the Wake County ordinance, we have now added that to the document with a reference to the Wake County ordinance having authority based on your adoption of the ordinance last year. That's one example of a material change. And if you see anything on one of these pages that you'd like to ask about, please feel free to do that as we go. Again, I'm not going to read all these to you, just want to hit some highlights to sort of give you a flavor of what is being changed in here. The flip side of that is that would ask you to please take time to read these, because when you do vote, your vote will be to adopt all of these changes unless any particularly are pulled out. Again, on this slide, if you look at 1882, an example of where we changed terminology to include inhabitants, same thing down below with vagrants. And then another example of a minor change, if you look at 18-148, we added that the planning director has to approve any recommendations for our enforcement officer to designate other staff. The way it reads right now technically. The way it reads right now, technically, the code enforcement officer can designate another staff member to enforce the article. And in conversation with staff felt that was more appropriate as an example for the director to do rather than just the code enforcement officer. A couple of quick examples here, as you start to get into Article 2, Chapter 22 for Fire, there were a number of changes made, really not in the process, but to come into compliance with the way that the state fire code reads. So extensive work done with the Fire Marshal, Charles Eldridge, Eldridge, excuse me, and with Chief Lozinski and with their staff to make some updates here. Did some again, we occasionally caught, if you'll see with 22-48, we occasionally had an oversight from last year's update where we had to clarify that misdemeanors were only a class three misdemeanor based on Senate Bill 300 being passed. So we caught some of that and then really added and changed language at the recommendation of the Fire Marshal to align with the state fire code where appropriate. On this next slide, again, still you're in fire code. An example, if you look down at 22-79, just some examples related to permitted fires that weren't included before. Again, little things that people could want to know if they want to have an outdoor fire, campfire, things like that. Again, just making sure that our ordinance reflects what we want the rules to be and to follow state code. If you look at 34-3, we're going to talk a little bit more about that, but that's one example where we're just changing language right now. The code, the ordinance states that any authorization for alcohol in a park needs to come through specifically the town manager. This is going to modify that language to have it go through the special event process, which does come to the manager's office. But we want to make sure we're being consistent in bringing it through that process and not just bringing it to the manager's office. And then from the inclusive standpoint, if you look down at 38-49/10, it used to identify specific sports, and we just tried to change that to participate in any activity, both to be inclusive and also to show that we want to, we're concerned with any activity that might endanger kids that are using the playground or just might not be collaborative in that regard. So sort of, and across the, across the wheel, if you will, sort of changes from, from things that we're dealing with in the ordinances. On the next slide, I think 50-1 is a good example. We'd had more than one occasion working with the engineering department where we would have trucks that would leave a construction site, and we have an ordinance that speaks to things falling off of the truck, but we don't have an ordinance that speaks to, they can't pull mud out into the street and just leave it. So we've added language there, working with Mark and his team so that that's not allowed, and they're responsible for making sure that if they're tracking mud out into the street from a site, that they're responsible for cleaning it up. I think one good example where staff has followed up on previous complaints to make sure that we're having our ordinances support the community that we want to see. And then we're going to talk more about parade permits, so I'm not going to speak much to that here. Going to keep going through these again, these are all just the variety, I'm going to go through the ordinances for tickets later.
Brandon?
I'm sorry?
Excuse me, Councilmember Garamella has a question.
Hey, Brandon, regarding the vehicles, right, like if you go a previous one, I remember like there was, especially for gray marble, there were a lot of trucks which are parked on that, and we didn't have any town ordinance that basically restricts trucks in our town streets, like Town of Cary and others have it. Is that covered somewhere? Because I remember like that, at the time, I think Chief Andrews said that it is a U D O change that has to come as part of that. Is it going to be addressed somewhere here?
So we aren't specifically addressing that. That's probably part of a bigger conversation that we can have as part of this discussion is whether you want to continue. In many cases, we deal with that on a case by case basis. You would be, I believe, if I was here when that conversation took place, you'd be talking about potentially restricting commercial vehicles on a residential street. Is that a fair description of what you're talking about?
Yeah. And with the size, and size too, like I don't want every commercial, like a commercial could be even a car, you know, with a commercial plate license, but more of like a box trucks or some big vehicles, those kind of things.
And we do not have a recommendation to that, but again, that's the purpose of bringing this to you, that if there are other changes you feel like need to be considered, that we would take that feedback tonight and potentially be ready to have, you know, an additional recommendation or at least do the research for you.
Yeah, so like, that's one thing I would request the council to reconsider.
Mayor Pretem Johnson?
So I'm gonna echo what Councilmember Garamella said. I think another area in town is Traybrook, where there was some parking of large commercial vehicles. So yes, I would like to pursue that. I just want to make sure that I back him up on that and that I say I'm in favor of having that discussion as well.
Continue, Brandon.
All right, thank you. Again, a couple of examples here, for example, with speed limits, school zone, you may ask why Morrisville Elementary School Zone is not identified. That's an N C D O T, not our school zone. If you look down to 58-92, changing from a men working to a work zone sign for inclusivity, same thing with citizens. And then again, we've throughout this in different places, added reference to ride shares. Those are typically your Uber or your Lyft that were not previously addressed in the ordinance, although we can really, really restrict those, and we'll talk about those as sort of a special topic as well. Here, we talk about vegetation, some changes being made at the recommendation of the planning department, just as far as who makes certain approvals or who takes certain actions. And then again, as I mentioned, Chapter 67 speaks about the ride share specifically. And that wraps up those material updates that, again, I would ask that you would take the time to read through and prepared with any questions next time or again, even prior to the next meeting. If you want to contact me, I can be prepared then to answer those in advance of the meeting. But there obviously are a number of changes there that are being recommend, recommended to update our ordinances. And that's a good, another good place to pause and see if there's other questions from any, any look that you've had a chance to make or just from what my conversation has been.
Hi, Brandon, could you go back to Town Ordinance 54, please?
Sure.
Page 16. There it is. Could you provide electronically, it's fine, the entirety of Section 54 of Ordinance 54-41 and 54-42 to me, please?
So they're in your packet, in the ordinance document that has all the ordinance information behind it. And we're actually going to speak more about this a little bit towards the end of the presentation, but you have the full ordinances in your packet as well.
Okay, what document did you say that was in?
That is in, I believe it should be the O R D document, the ordinance document, has all those ordinances behind it where it shows all the recommended changes.
Okay, thank you.
Brandon, on the last slide, you know, you keep referencing S B 300 and type three misdemeanor. Can you enlighten us what that means? Because I like, what has changed and what does it really mean?
Sure, and I should have done that upfront, I apologize. You remember last year, Chief Acosta did quite a bit of work, Senate Bill 300, S B 300 is Senate Bill 300 from last year, that came out and changed that basically said that any municipal ordinance was by definition a violation unless you specifically made it a misdemeanor. And if you made it a misdemeanor, it was going to be a class three misdemeanor with no fine of more than $500. So we did that a lot with some of the firearms information that you did ordinance updates last year, and we just had a few places where we recognized that it wasn't cleaned up last year, so we're cleaning it up now from the 2021 changes.
Thank you for that. Like what, can you give me examples what that could be like in?
So, I mean, what that meant was that we have a lot of things identified in our ordinance as a violation of the law. And so before Senate Bill 300, you could make those a violation, which is basically a fine, or you could make them a misdemeanor offense, which could come from the record and a fine. So when Senate Bill 300 was passed, it said that basically you have to by default have everything being a violation unless you specifically call out certain offenses to be misdemeanors. And so if we're in the case of Chapter 67, what's on the screen, it's clarifying that if you were to try to hire a cab and did not have the money to pay them, that rather than being just a violation, that could be a misdemeanor offense. So it really speaks to individual offenses.
Okay, thank you.
So Brandon, I'm going to get in the weeds for a minute. In the, it's section, I think it's 38, the Parks and Rec section, where in the document itself, it's page, I guess, 100, oh, I don't, actually, it doesn't have a page number. Sorry, let me.
Does it have a C D down at the bottom?
No.
Or are you looking?
Oh, yes, okay, yeah, it does. It has a C D 38-7.
Okay, let me get there.
There's a, a section there, sorry, I'm backing up, where you talk about parks and facility use.
Yes.
And it's E, where we talk about the number of persons that gather. I just.
That's an area coming up.
I'm sorry, go ahead.
That's one of the five that we're going to discuss when we get through this sort of general overview.
Okay, thank you.
Yep, sorry.
No, I'm sorry. Jumping in.
All right, Brandon, I think you can continue.
Okay, so we have sort of five special topics that we wanted to just give you a little bit more background on. One of those is alcohol use in the parks. So our current ordinance requires that the town manager give permission for alcohol to be consumed in a park. And of course, in doing so, that also requires that there's an A B C permit issued to the individual or, or business that would be serving the alcohol. And we typically have other requirements along with, you know, a police presence perhaps and other security concerns. So we have not typically done this on a regular basis. The most recent opportunity we had was in 2022 in September with the minor league cricket finals being brought to town. So that was done through a V I P tent, and it was controlled access, so it was not available to the public per se, and it was, went very well. There were zero incidents with the service of alcohol there, no problems whatsoever. And so as part of our continuing development of not only Church Street Park, but potentially activity in other parks, we are looking to develop this policy. So for now, what we are recommending is changing the language from just the town manager granting permission to instead having it come forward as part of the special event process. What that does is it gives us a better scope of what they're intending to do, who they might be serving alcohol to. We have a whole set of restrictions that we have developed up that show how you can do it, how you have to have a restricted area, you have to have someone responsible for I D, someone separate responsible for maintaining the people that should be in and shouldn't be out and things of that nature. So the change in the ordinance is strictly the language that says that'll be approved through the special event process rather than through the manager's office. But then there's a lot of work being done in the background behind that. And then you also may be aware that the state has authorized through general statute a social district, which we will be considering and evaluating in the future. And obviously, that could be an asset to an area like town center and potentially areas of town as well. So wanted to put that out there and see if there are any questions or comments about that topic.
Councilmember Garamella?
Yeah, Brandon, this is good, but we share, like say Cedar Fork District Park and like say, like Church Street is R T P or some Wake County. Does this ordinance override the county ordinance if they say no alcohol consumption? I just wanted to know because we have mix of both the parks, right?
Yeah, so we still have to work with the county and with the A B C. So the county refers folks to the A B C to get the permits issued. So this in no way takes away the A B C requirement. This is still an additional requirement beyond the county permitting or essentially the state through the county permitting alcohol sales on a site. This is our own additional rules beyond that.
Okay, thank you.
All right, it's a tag team. Mayor Pretem Johnson?
Yes, it is a tag team. So just, just a point of clarification or just to, from a historical perspective, we have had alcohol on town properties in the past. The, the first version of our East Meets West Festival that was held here on Town Hall Drive had a beer and wine tent area. So I know this, this might be the first example of going through this new process, but we have had, we have successfully had alcohol consumption and in town-sponsored events, and it, it had not ever been a problem that I'm ever aware of. Limited number, you can count on one hand the number of times, but.
Yes, thank you, and I apologize if I wasn't clear that it was the first recent effort. Thank you.
Go ahead, Brandon.
All right, thank you. So the next is the, the current ordinance addresses parades, group demonstrations and picket lines, essentially all as the same event for application and approval purposes. So I had an opportunity to speak at length with Chief Acosta and also with Michelle in planning and with some of her staff and others in town about this process. And what we have, are recommending through these changes is that parades basically are handled through the special event process. That's really what that process is intended to handle, is that sort of event where you're bringing people together, typically around some sort of, you know, community event or enjoyable event that people want to attend. And we want to make sure that, that those are being held. And again, occasionally, those could have some controversy to them. We've seen that in surrounding communities, but we want to make sure that we respect the constitutional rights of anyone that might want to have a parade. So we're recommending that those go through the special event process, which they typically have in the past for the very few requests, excuse me, they have not in the past, they have gone to the chief of police for approval as the ordinance currently reads today, but we're recommending then rather than doing it through the chief, that they go to the special event process, and that includes a review by the police department, but doesn't that way exclude the other departments that need to be involved. The other changes that you will see, if you have a chance to look at the ordinance and the amendments made or recommended there, is to sort of pull out the process for group demonstrations and picket lines. And so several changes that we've recommended, one is to remove any fee for a permit. Again, the purpose of these permits is not to approve or disapprove of the content or the activity, but it's really just to make sure that it can be done safely, and we want to make sure that there's no financial capacity questions of who can and who can't express their rights. But also clarifies our expectations and requirements to ensure that events are conducted in a safe manner. So we've added some language that clarifies what can be done, what can't be done, what the expectations are. And it also adds clarifying language that protected speech is not a factor in whether or not we issue a permit. Again, the permit is really so that the police department and the town know what's anticipated and can be prepared to provide for public safety if and when those events occur.
Brandon, you have a question from Councilmember Robati?
Yep, yes, ma'am.
Hi, Brandon, who determines whether a group is requesting a parade, a demonstration or a picket line? Do they self-determine or do we have some, do we have more clarifying language than it appears here?
I'm sorry. Yes, ma'am, there is definition in the ordinance that defines what both of those are. And so, sorry, yes, they are defined in the ordinance, and that generally is what determines which one it is. But in all honesty, there's not a lot of difference between the two as far as what our requirements are.
So if a group comes and signs up to have a parade, but it's determined that it's really a group demonstration, staff would make that determination?
Yes, staff would help them with that and share information with them as to what might be required on the part of the town to ensure that whatever they're attempting to do can be done safely and without a negative impact on other town resources or the greater community
Thank you, Brandon, go ahead.
Actually, I think Councilmember Ralph.
I'm sorry, I did not see it. Councilmember Ralph?
Brandon, you might have already mentioned this, but when we talk about new groups and demonstrations, like in, for example, in our parks, is it the policy of the town, if it was during the political season, when you have campaign events, like a political party does a campaign rally, or there might be a group? rally or there might be a group, like a certain division, whether it's, you know, Asian American caucus or whatever that wants to do something in the park, do we prohibit it for political reasons when we talk about demonstrations?
So what we have in the past said is that we do not allow political events in the parks, particularly when it relates to renting or shelter or a space in the park. We, we do that to stay neutral and the town attorney may have other feedback on that. Frank?
That has been our policy through the years, yes, that we don't allow town property to use for political.
Would that be, and I'm just curious, like would that, would that also apply if, you know, like a presidential candidate came or the vice, you know, somebody or like the president came and they wanted to come to Mooresville, could they come to a park? Or would we not allow that?
Current ordinance does not allow.
So let me ask, if I may.
Yes, please, I'll go after you if that's okay.
Yeah, I want to ask a follow-up then Frank, like, you know, political, I can understand, but if a person is in an elected office, why should we discourage that person from, you know, coming to the park and giving? Like example, Congresswoman Deborah Ross, you know, she's elected and she wants to have something. And or, you know, you get some other, you know, person who is already elected, not like, you know, in the process. So those are two different things because you're in the office and you're trying to convey that to the community, what they're trying to do and they want to have an event. Like example, I would say is David Price had like evened on Cary Art Center, like, so a lot of people went and it was, you know, it was very useful. So I would, I would say like that should be cleared up, not just put as political because if you're elected, you are in, you know, you have every right to talk to your constituents.
Well, between now and the time that you're actually vote, Brandon and I, Laura can look at that and see if there's some angles to play, but I guess the idea is the parks, the park and also political, political has different meanings, but I think it's more of a campaign, political season kind of thing. There were, the ordinance, I think, basically did not want town parks to use for political partisan rally, you know? There's obviously plenty of other places you can have a political partisan rally. But now an elected congressman, senator, president wants to come and, you know, give remarks on some special day or Mooresville's birthday, whatever. I mean, that's not a political.
Exactly, that's what I meant to say.
It's been interpreted through the years. I, I admit it's a little gray area. Congressman Rabadi.
I believe Mayor Colley was next, I apologize.
Yeah, I was just going to say, it's a little bit gray there. I don't think we're looking to have big campaign events, but we would welcome our elected officials to come and speak to our residents and be engaged with us. So that's kind of the fine line that we're going to be trying to work on.
Well, thank you for the promotion, Frank, that was very cool of you. Also, I think that we should make, that we should allow an exception for nonpartisan political events like candidate forums and other, I can't, I can't remember the size of candidate forum, but there are times.
Unreverent.
I mean, yeah, you know, where, where the, the subject matter is political, but, but it's, it's for, you know, those things are for the public good, candidate forums, you know? I mean, I think we should allow them in parks if people want to reserve a park for, for a nonpartisan candidate forum that all candidates are invited to, I think that should be allowed.
Fair point, we can work on that.
Thank you.
Councilmember Fender?
Well, this has got me thinking, if we allow group demonstrations or picket line, how is that all that different than allowing a group that is political to gather?
It's no different other than it's just a park, it's featured. So you could picket down at Mooresville Carpenter Road with a permit, you can have a parade down Town Hall Drive, but this is dealing with town parks.
Okay, can you have a group demonstration in a park?
Again, it's your ordinance, we can change it, but that's, that's the way it's been applied and interpreted through the years.
Yeah, that's fine, I just didn't want to handle a group demonstration differently than candidates having picnic in the park. I wouldn't see there being any, that much of a difference between those two types of groups. But if they're both not allowed in a park, that's fine.
And Councilmember Fender, I think what you'll find, and Chief Acosta could speak to this as well, is that, you know, depending on what the demonstration may be about and are there others that may have opposing messages that be there, you know, some of those things also play into it. A lot of that would end up being on a case-by-case basis within the context of what the ordinance would or would not allow. But I absolutely hear what your concern is and I think Frank and I and staff can, can talk more about that, the park issue.
Thank you, Mayor Colley.
And I'm just recalling a few years ago, there was a Black Lives Matter in the George Floyd timeframe, so I do not think that we want to discourage that type of activity in the future. So I just want to share that.
I'm concerned about the language in the statute that says that a permit can be denied if there is reliable information that a counter demonstration or picket line will occur that will negatively impact the ability of the police department to safeguard the group demonstration or picket line. I 100% understand the need for that ordinance, but I also don't like the idea that a group could be intimidated out of gathering by the threat of a counter protest. I'd like to figure out how we can balance those two things.
Councilmember Rabadi, I think that's a very good point. And I think it's also important to think about the opposite end of that spectrum is we don't want to sort of stifle any speech, but also be cognizant there are groups that travel with the intent of creating havoc, if you will, there may be a different term for that, but in communities with little to no notice. So some of that is also just intended to say, it may not be here today, but it may be here tomorrow because we can get enough officers to make sure that we can safeguard everyone tomorrow, but we can't today or something along those lines. But again, on that case-by-case basis, but hear what you're saying with your concern for not stifling any speech.
Thank you, Brandon.
All right, Brandon, thank you and continue, please.
All right, thank you. So Mayor Protem Johnson, here would be the one that you were asking about. So a little background in this, our current ordinance requires that a group of 20 or more obtain a permit for organized activities. And we receive really very few, if any, permit requests. We have groups that tend to show up and use the parks. We have seen some increased activity, particularly at Mooresville Community Park where we have the largest open space available. We have been doing the best that we can to try to monitor that, but currently we've seen a lot of heavy activity in those parks with groups that we did not know were there. And so what, in talking with our Parks and Rec staff and also with our public works staff, we are recommending that we change this ordinance to be a group that requires that groups of 20, not only, excuse me, all right, let me take a step back, that we reduce the group, that any group that wishes to organize there would need to have a permit so that we know that they're there. The challenge comes in trying to rest the fields. So if you can see down to the bottom, we're seeing impacts on the fields because we have seen groups, one example would be volleyball players. We have seen them come up and set up as many as six to eight to 10 to 12 nets and have all that activity going on in the field. And then we have also other activities before and after. And if we don't know that it's there, it makes it very challenging to try to regulate that and more importantly, to try to protect those fields. And so recog, excuse me, requiring a permit for any organized use of the park, what that does is several things for us. First of all, is it better protects the fields, allows that field rest when it's necessary? It also ensures that we're sharing the fields, that it's not necessarily just I'll get up the earliest in the morning and get it every time, but that we can make sure that interested residents can share and perhaps we are giving priority to our residents versus non-residents. And then again, also important to note that it does not impact the ability of individuals, small groups or families to use the parks for non-organized activities. This is mostly the folks that know they're going to be there on a Thursday night, every Thursday night, and are going to pack up and come and set up things just so that we know when they're there and have a better ability to control that activity in theoretically all of our parks, but particularly in the open space at Mooresville Community Park.
Mayor Colley?
I don't have another slide there, so I'll stop there.
I would just ask, would we, would there be a charge for such a permit? Or would it be like the other one that it's just more for organization and understanding?
There is currently a fee for a, a permit in the park, but we can certainly discuss if you don't wish to charge that fee or we can assemble that fee around potentially group size. I think there is opportunity there to discuss that.
Okay, because I, I really like the idea of people using our parks and gathering as groups. I don't want to discourage that, but I do want to protect the fields. So those are just some quick thoughts there.
Mayor Protem Johnson?
So, thank you, Brandon, your explanation was helpful. I guess I need to go back then and really, I tried to, obviously I didn't read your slides as closely as I read the document. I really tried to read the document and the changes in the document and I, I missed the reference to the number 20. So anyhow, so, yeah, but I also too want to make sure that we're not discouraging folks from gathering, even, even if, you know, there are a family, a large family that wants to gather for a picnic. I mean, that's what the parks are for and certain areas are minimal to people just hanging out. And I don't, I don't want to discourage that, but I'll need to, but your explanation was helpful. I got to think about it tomorrow.
Yeah, in response to that, I think that's where we, that would have fallen under this third bullet on the screen of not intending to stop. We would not expect a permit from a family of five or 10 that wants to go out and have a picnic or toss a football. This is really around the organized use. This is the folks that have a pickup league that plays every week. This is the group that wants to do, you know, a morning cricket practice or perhaps over at, at, off of Key Bridge, things like that, where we have some regular uses that we're just not able to track, sometimes because of the size and sometimes because we need to do a better job with education. And that's what we will do. Again, the intent here is not to deny anyone, the intent here is to balance the use of the fields with the, the health of the field so that they stay available and ensuring that we are allowing everyone that would like an opportunity to have an opportunity when we can. And so, again, happy to have you look at that again and answer any other questions you may have either between or at the next meeting.
Okay, thank you. And just, so what would the, the permit fee be then?
I would have to look that up.
I'm looking myself and I don't see it. Okay, okay, that's fine, that's fine, thank you.
Councilmember Rabadi?
No, I was, mine was answered, thank you.
Councilmember Garamella?
So, so just talking about not the fees, the turnaround time, you know, do we have a turnaround time? Because I remember like we had a different pace, pace, pay structure or fee structure. If you come at the late, you had to pay more and if you come in advance, you know, it's a different price. Is that still in play or, because I usually, many people ask me, you know, how to get it, so I direct them to the specials, special use permit, but what's the turnaround usually for that kind of thing?
So we, we usually can do potentially, if it's during the week, a same-day turnaround potentially, if it's just an application to use the field, really what it entails is just making sure that the field is A, available and B, that it's not intentionally being rested. And I know that can cause some, some question or confusion by people that they see a perfectly good field with a sign up that says, you know, please don't use it. But again, really important that I've come to learn and I think we have some staff there that could speak to this if we need to, but the importance of resting the field to keep it in the good condition. And then of course, our ability to sort of enforce that. So this is one of those tools to help with that because, you know, I was sent a picture this past summer from one of our staff members of where our public works department had just put down pesticides at Cedar Fork and had the signs out saying it had just been sprayed and not safe for use and there were probably 20 people on the field. So we just need to help if we can reach those organized groups a little better through this process, it'll help with controlling for that.
Thank you.
Mayor Colley?
I think our Parks and Rec Department is doing a really good job with signup geniuses and things like that, so I'd be wondering if it would be less intensive on our resources to essentially set up signup geniuses for people to sign up for the fields rather than go through a permit process. It's just an option to consider.
I think the challenge with signup genius is it's yes or no, as opposed to if it's a permit process and they want to do something on this day, but the exact field they would like is not available, we can work with them and offer them alternatives as opposed to just a yes or no of a slot being available. But we can certainly continue to look at both.
Thank you, sir.
Go ahead, Brandon.
Okay. So this last one was pretty straightforward, just rideshare vehicles. We did not previously address rideshare vehicles. So what we have, did some research and quite honestly, the general statutes prohibit us actually from regulating rideshare companies and vehicles with the exception of standard traffic laws. So the language that we've included just clarifies that there are certain things that we can regulate, but for the most part, the way that they operate is not regulatable by our ordinances. And so we have added that language into the ordinance as well. Any questions? I don't, that, that's really just an update for you in case you have any questions about it. All right, the next one is smoking and vaping. So you have seen information from Wake County as some of the steps that they have attempted to take. So we reviewed their information and we're recommending updating our ordinances in two places so that we would generally align with what Wake County is doing as far as their language. Our new language would include vaping as being unacceptable in our parks along with smoking and other tobacco use. And then we've also in here increased the violation of that ordinance from $25 to $50 per incident. And we will be working with both our Parks and Rec and our public works department to add enhanced signage in our parks. And then we really have an opportunity, particularly with not only our regular park users, but also our larger scale events, to educate them and to seek that voluntary compliance as we see events occur to try to reduce smoking and vaping and also help in addressing some of the litter associated with smoking. Any questions on the smoking portion?
Mayor Colley?
Yeah, I was just, um, there's, I've seen some documentation about the difference between 100% tobacco-free and 100% smoke-free when comparing different municipalities and different counties. What is ours and what does that mean? And is it possible to provide us all the different levels of enforcement? I understand that we don't allow it in buildings or vehicles now, but some towns are saying not on public property at all, town-owned property. So is that part of this? Is that something the council might want to consider?
So we, I'm pulling up the specific language to answer that question while we're talking, Mayor. So we are following the, the lang, in regards to language, we're following the Wake County language so that we are consistent with theirs. When that was brought forward, we, we heard that there was general support of the way that they were approaching smoking, tobacco use and vapor products as the way to address that. And then let me see here. And then we will have signs again on our buildings and on our grounds and I will be able to give you a summary at the next meeting if you would like as to what that covers and if there are public grounds that it doesn't necessarily cover. I can get that clarified for you.
Okay, and if you could provide the entire council, like charts of the other municipalities and where they are doing stuff, I think that'd be helpful for us to consider where we're going to. going to fall on this.
Yes, sir. I, I can see if there's an updated chart from Wake County. I think they shared one when they did their update. I'll, I'll see if that's available.
Okay. Thank you very much. Appreciate your help.
Any other questions on smoking?
I do not see any.
Okay. So our next steps then for you, we'll be back February 28th. We'll answer some of the questions here posed. Again, if you have questions as you get into reading some of this, I realize there's a lot of material there, and you'd like to reach out in between, please feel free to do that. That would let us better prepare to answer those questions on the 28th. And then if we can get through productive conversation on the 28th, we would be coming back on the 14th to propose adoption. But it doesn't stop there, as I'm sure you can appreciate. Assuming that there is adoption, we will have several things to do on the staff end, one of which is to get these posted on the website. As you can see, there's a number of different tables that are associated with the ordinances that were not included here. Those will all be updated, but those are all just data. So there's nothing for you to amend or approve. It's all just data based on what you're approving in the ordinances. We will be having training as, as needed for our staff so that they're aware of the relevant updates. We'll be working on updated information to educate and work with the community as we implement some of these. Obviously, some are more relevant than others. And then, as was alluded to with Mayor Protem Johnson earlier, we'll also be making sure that we have a process in place going forward so that we're doing at least an annual review of this scope so that we don't have to go quite to this length again in the future to keep this current and to make sure that we're being as transparent as possible with our community. I am happy to take any other questions you may have. And again, just thank you for your, your patience and your flexibility. It's challenging to do this when I can't see you to respond to you.
Great job, Brandon. There's just so much in here. When we were talking about the rideshares, I meant to ask, but forgot, do we have any authority to regulate micro mobility, like scooters or anything within our town limits? Is that addressed anywhere?
There is, we, we don't specifically address that. We have a few that I think you could relate to that in our ordinances, but there is also general strat, general statute that addresses those that the officers can use to enforce that as well.
Would it be helpful to include that in this update? So it's really more clear and noted? Or do you feel it's covered adequately enough?
I think generally if it's covered adequately in general statute, we don't try to repeat it or add it here. And given that we're not doing anything particular here as opposed to what the statute's doing, I would not recommend adding it into our ordinances.
Thank you, sir.
Brandon, just excellent job, you know. You, it's a lot of material, and you covered it excellent. My question is more in regards with the new high school and our partnership with the Wake, Wake County Public Schools. How is their ordinance, you know, is it aligned with our ordinances, especially because we are taking, technically, it's not ours, but we are getting like Wake Tech, those 30 or 40 acres. And then also like Cedar Fork District Park will be used for school use during the school time. So are we inconsistent with their rules? Or are we more stringent than that?
I would say that we are generally consistent. I mean, there are always going to be little things here and there, but that's part of the reason when you look at things like the smoking and some of these bigger issues, we try to stay as consistent as we can with the county and even with our municipal peers to do that. There's going to be small discrepancies, but we are generally going to be consistent.
All right. Thank you.
I see no more questions, Brandon.
That is what I've got.
Thank you.
All right, Brandon, thank you very much.
Thank you all very much. Appreciate it.
And Mayor, if I could, at this point, just suggest you continue on through to the closed session before a break?
Yep. I think that's a great idea. So we're going to do future events and then comments by everybody. Right now, we're at item 10, future meetings, events. Members of the Morrisville Aquatics and Fitness Center can share the love this month by bringing a guest for free once a day, starting today until Friday, February 17th. The limit is one guest per day. The M A F C also offers racquetball community play on Sunday, February 19th, from 2:30 PM till 4:30 PM. That's just a drop in. Please join the Morrisville Senior Center at 4117 Davis Drive for tea and conversation on Friday, February 17th, from 12:30 until 2:00 PM. In addition to tea service, there will be salad and a sweet treat. The cost is $12 for residents and $14 for non-residents. Call the MSC at 919-463-7140 to register. The Western Wake Farmers Market offers healthy and fresh food and goods from small and local businesses. It's now operating under our winter hours from 9:30 AM till noon every Saturday. Area residents can expect to see a lot of smoke and numerous public safety vehicles when firefighters conduct a live fire training at 123 Scoggins Avenue behind the Healthy Food Hub and the Farmers Market on Saturday, February 18th, from 8:00 AM till 1:00 PM. And you're welcome to come over. It'll be roped off. You can safely view, it's kind of like what happened two weeks ago. It was very interesting. Please save the date to join us on Saturday, March 18th, from noon until 3:00 PM at the Cedar Fork Community Center at 1050B Town Hall Drive as we celebrate Holi, the ancient Hindu festival marking the end of winter and welcoming the spring season. The festival is free and will feature dancing, holi powders, and food for purchase. The Morrisville Senior Center is also hosting a trip to the Ava Gardner Museum in Smithfield on Wednesday, February 22nd, from 9:00 AM till 4:00 PM. The cost is $23 for residents, $28 for non-residents. Lunch will be at a local restaurant at a separate cost. Please register online by Monday, February 20th. And I would like to end with a quick call to action. The public comment period on proposed commuter rail is open through Sunday, February 19th. So that's right around the corner. Go Triangle released a report early in January with information about options for a future commuter rail service, including an option labeled Central to serve Morrisville sooner rather than later. You can visit readyforrailnc.com/feasibility to read the report or to complete, to, to complete a quick feedback survey before the comment period ends this Sunday, February 19th. And always for a full listing of events, please see the town calendar at www.townofmorrisville.org. And now we're rolling right into council and manager comments, and I happen to be first. So I would just say happy Valentine's Day. And you may or may not have noticed, there's some flowers right down on the bottom left of the computer screen, which I think is a really nice touch for the day. I'd like to say congratulations to Fire Rescue Chief Nate Lizinski, who in this room just last week was sworn in. And also congratulations to a number of our first responders for ascending to increased responsibility and leadership this past month. That includes Steve Edwards, Dylan Briggs, Kirk Miller, and Matt Lebon have all been promoted to captain. Additionally, Natasha Byrd and Brian West have been promoted to master firefighter. We are fortunate to have some of the most dedicated people anywhere making up our highly rated and accredited fire rescue department. At this time, I'd like to recognize Councilmember Rabadi, followed by Councilmember Fender.
No comments. Thank you, Mayor.
Councilmember Fender, followed by Councilmember Ralph.
I don't have any comments.
Councilmember Ralph, followed by Mayor Protem Johnson.
I've got a few, I'm sorry. Ditto on the remarks right there on the Chief Lizinski Fire Department. I did want to say a word about Morrisville Carpenter Road. I just want to thank the staff, the Baltimore Mark and the team. In 2013, our council came together to identify a road project when we were in retreat, Carpenter Road, that was denied. We identified construction plans, but we stayed in course, and all of us should be ourselves a pat on the back for staying to the course. Job done. I never ever dreamt driving on a railroad, really amazing. And we want to thank the residents for being so patient across us. And we've listened to our residents about addressing traffic congestion. So if you look at the, 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 the,
Mayor Protem Johnson, followed by Councilmember Garamella, please.
So I, I only have two comments to make. This is the first council meeting we've had since our annual winter retreat. So I just wanted to say publicly again to my colleagues, thank you for the time. And I also want to say thank you to the staff for all the hard work. We were sequestered, and I use that word, sequestered. I've never been on a jury, but we were sequestered and worked really hard during our time together. Obviously, got some time to socialize at dinner too, but worked really hard. And I, I do want to express my thanks to everyone for that successful weekend. I think that will be very helpful as we move forward now into the rest of 2023. And I'm looking forward to the successes that we'll continue to have here in the town of Morrisville. The other comment I wanted to make was I, unfortunately, was on vacation and missed Chief Lizinski, Lizinski swearing in. So I want to officially say congratulations to Chief Lizinski. I thank him very much for stepping up and for his service. And I also want to thank again Fire Chief Krittl. He is a true public servant, and I thank him very much for his service to the town of Morrisville. And I know he will continue to exemplary work here for all our citizens, our residents, and our business community. So, thank you.
Councilmember Garamella?
Everything has been said, but I want to thank Martha and Giselle for, you know, organizing the weekend, the substation tour. It was very informative and also, you know, to the youth people for making that happen. And actually, I learned a lot during that time. Thank you.
Anything from the staff, town manager page?
No.
Okay. So we have a closed session this evening to discuss matters relating to economic development and attorney client privilege. We have no plans to conduct any public business after the closed session. So at this time, I'd like to say on behalf of the council, thank you for watching this meeting of the Morrisville Town Council. We hope you plan to join us again in two weeks. Please feel free to email your town council members at towncouncil@townofmorrisville.org or visit www.townofmorrisville.org/council for additional contact information. At this time, I'd ask for a motion to enter into closed session.
Mayor, council, I'll make a motion that we, statute 143.44, and a five, I move that we go into closed session for the purposes of discussing a economic development and
Have a motion in a couple of seconds. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none. That's 6-0. Carriage unanimously is 7:32. We are now in closed session. We're going to need to clear the room. We're also going to take a 15-minute break. So if we can come reconvene at, let's say, 7:48, please be back then. Thank you very much.
And council, we invite you down to the table for the closed session, please.